We'll now call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take row?
Commissioner Dalton.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Nivares. Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater.
Here.
Chair Nguyen.
Here. We'll now go through the oral communications item. And I have Woe Be King. This is oral communication.
And I didn't forget to Bruce, okay? When I went to Eureka last three weeks ago, I thought about you. I gave her cards as a gift that was you in, so I had to bring it, okay? This was you. This was you, okay? So I said, and I can bring this to my buddy Bruce of all those, okay? That's for you. From Eureka.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And reference to the housing. You got your housing authority, okay? Believe me, I'm out there with these clowns every day. I live with them, okay? I've been homeless for 20 years now, off and on. I'm on the streets. I'm on the streets every night. I freeze every night, okay? That's why I came back from Eureka, okay? But in reference to your housing, and I told the Housing Authority, County Orange, okay? The Housing Authority, County Orange, yeah. I told them, you have so many people defrauding you folks. It's unbelievable. I mean, they got, you know, they got all kinds of roommates. I mean, I know at least, I don't know, 45, 50 that, you know, are cheating the system. They got all kinds of roommates that live with them, boyfriends, this, that, and everything else. You know, sneaking in, the family members, living with them, and everything else. I mean, doesn't anybody investigate? I mean, you guys allocate all this money and this, that, and everything, but yet, nobody investigates where the money goes and how these people defraud the public. I mean, I see fraud every day at MHA and all those other, you know, fraudulent homeless clowns every day that defraud the public. I mean, you know, it's sad. It really is. Because, I mean, you know, the taxpayers have to pay for this. And, I mean, don't you guys, like, investigate? I mean, you know, I mean, I'll get all the money, and all these people are living like, you know, kings and this, that, you know, on the taxpayers' expense, and nice apartments and that. I mean, I know a lady wanted me to move in her place, and she's like, yeah, she had a great place in Irvine, Black Chick, whatever, you know? And she's like, move in her place and give her $40 a month, and she'll be my girlfriend. And, but she's got two other boyfriends, and this, that, and, you know. I ain't moving in, you know, I'd rather live on the street, you know? But, I mean, it's time for you guys to just, like, you know, do your jobs and have the people investigate and eliminate the fraud aspect of it. I mean, you know, you're helping out all these people, you think you are, but you're really not, because in rest, in all essence, I mean, they're, you know, some of them may be handicapped, disabled, whatever, but they all have their friends, families, whatever, live with them as well. And the taxpayers have to pay for multiple families living on taxpayers' expense. Thank you.
We have status report on those issues and the public record. If you ever need to see them, you're welcome to them. We'll now go through the consent items.
A minute.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings or items for consideration. Any matters from Commissioners and Director? Hearing none. And I'll call for the adjournments of the Housing Authority. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 25th. I'm sorry. Yeah, Tuesday, May 25th, 2010, at 6:30 in the Council Chamber.
No.
Oh, no, the height, yeah.
We have that little.
We can have Dina go get it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call, roll.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We'll have the invocation by Kingsley Okariki, Finance Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Doe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I see we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor Thomas Chute from the Department of Forestry is here to present our annual Tree City USA Award.
Thanks so much for having me. I'm very excited to be here. Again, my name is Thomas Chute. I'm from Cal Fire Urban Forestry Program. The state urban forestry program partnership is in a partnership with the National Arbor Day Foundation. We recognize cities that have gone above and beyond to appreciate their trees and take care of them through a program called Tree City USA. And I'm very delighted to tell you guys that for the 16th year in a row, Garden Grove is being recognized. This year is also special because you're being recognized as getting the Growth Award, which requires going above and beyond the normal every-year stuff. Just to qualify, you have to spend more money than the year before, and then you have to earn a certain number of points in different categories. So it's really quite an honor. I'd like to present this award to Mayor Dalton and to show you guys the flag.
Big congratulations to.
Why don't you bring the flag up here? And you can hold that when we all stand and have our picture taken.
It's kind of big.
You need someone else to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Charles. Sorry, Charles.
Oh, he's not too tall.
It's easier to plant a tree than hold a flag, isn't it?
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, I'll open oral communication for the council, the Public Financing Authority, San District, and what did I skip?
Public Financing.
No, I did Public Financing. What?
Agency.
Okay, all of them. You got it. Okay. David Price.
Well, I was going to start by giving my name, but apparently you already know that. So Mayor Dalton, Mayor Protem Jones, and esteemed members of the City Council. My wife and I live on Marshand Avenue, where we've lived for 25 years, and it's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. We appreciate the quality of the service that you render to our community. And since we've lived here since 1985, and our four children have attended Garden Grove City Schools and done well by them, we appreciate very much the quality of life we've enjoyed while we've lived here. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And as you may know, we have three chapel buildings here in Garden Grove, one nearby on Stanford, one in Valley View, and one down on Bolsa. And in those three buildings, our church has eight congregations for English-speaking, one Vietnamese, one Korean, one Spanish-speaking, and one Samoan. And on May 8th of this year, members of our church throughout the state of California will be offering volunteer service to our cities and towns, and particularly here in Garden Grove, members of our stake, as well as our friends from other denominations, will be performing service at Twin Lakes Park and at Garden Grove Park by participating in a cleanup service day. And our church is participating in this because, as a Christian denomination, we believe in being good neighbors and in providing service to others. And additionally, we feel that parks provide an important source of wholesome family recreation and that maintaining and improving our parks has the potential to maintain our quality of life. And as a result, I've been asked to present the following resolution for your vote this evening. And as you can imagine, I am encouraging a vote in favor of the resolution. So if I may. Whereas parks are an essential component to the individual health, well-being, happiness, and quality of life for all human beings, making our communities more attractive places to live and work, and whereas parks assist us to become more connected with nature and to our families, contribute to youth development, social and cultural exchange, public health, recreation, environmental health, and community building, and whereas the current economic crisis has caused severe cutbacks in funding to clean, beautify, and maintain city, county, and state parks so that they can fulfill their valued functions, and whereas the city of Garden Grove encourages and supports efforts by its citizens, service clubs, faith-based organizations, and others to promote volunteerism, and whereas Mormon Helping Hands is a significant international volunteer program sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which provides community assistance and disaster relief throughout the world, and whereas Mormon Helping Hands has designated May 8th, 2010, as a day of community service throughout the state of California, in which over 100,000 Californians will assist in renewing city, county, and state parks, including citizens of Garden Grove who will participate in local projects, including the cleanup of Garden Grove Park and the cleanup of Twin Lakes Park. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Garden Grove proclaims May 8th, 2010, as Mormon Helping Hands Day, and be it further resolved that the city of Garden Grove acknowledges and thanks the volunteers who will assist our community on Mormon Helping Hands Day. And that's the end of the resolution. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them. If not, thank you for your consideration.
I have one question.
Sure.
What time will you be out there?
We'll be out there at 9:00 in the morning. And we should be there till about sometime in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, well, just, this is 6A on our consent item list, so I'm going to go ahead and pull this forward, and we'll handle the whole thing at the same time. I do have a proclamation stating, as you wished, designating May 8th as Mormon Helping Hands Day. And just recently, we had Earth Day, and the parks shouldn't be very dirty because we were working, but we do appreciate it. It just goes to show the spirit of volunteerism and people working within a community, and we certainly appreciate that. And this proclamation basically says what you said, only this kind of memorializes it. People will forget you said it, but when they look on the wall and wherever you put this, they'll remember it. So as a council, I'll move it. Anybody second?
I'll second it.
Okay, call for the vote. Okay, now it's done, and if you'd come up forward, I'd like to give you the proclamation, and hopefully we can have a picture taken.
One, two, three. Take another one. One, two, three.
Thank you again.
Mayor Protem Jones and council staff. A few months ago, I had to give my resignation to the Planning Commission. Moving out of Garden Grove was one of the hardest things my wife and I have had to do for a long time. And at that time, I didn't have a chance to come in and tell you how much I appreciated and honored the time I spent on the commissions that I worked on in Garden Grove, both Planning and the Traffic Commission. My wife and I, when we decided to move, was for many different reasons. Financial, my children, my grandchildren, my child lives in Las Vegas, so we wanted to move to Kingman where we were closer. As you know, I spent an awful lot of time in this building, and I miss it really bad. I still watch you guys every Tuesday, and I appreciate the really beautiful things you said about me the night you accepted my resignation. I just want to let all the staff members that helped me over the years, and the councils both past and present, I was real honored to serve on those commissions. And I'm working on, right now, on getting in a commission in the city of Kingman, or the county, whichever way is the best. And I hope to continue the work that I did here in Garden Grove and help the city of Kingman become the great city that the city of Garden Grove is. Again, I thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Woe Be King.
I was busy on something. Oral communications. In reference to, what item should I speak on?
Anything but public hearings.
Any but public hearings. Because, I mean, you guys are switching all these things around here. My topics are some of the finances, okay? I mean, I just see a lot of money funneling around. And when I looked at Brandy Wines, I know they've had a lot of developments in this area. I remember back when I ran for mayor of the city back in 2002, if you all recall, there were certain council members on the board that had money contributions from Brandy Wines, okay? And I know that, you know, I know how the program works. I see it in each and every city. I've traveled, you know, I don't know, maybe 100 different cities throughout Orange County abroad and California and abroad. I know that a lot of these developers funnel monies through different channels, different ways, to get the money to the council members, to get the votes in their favor for whatever their agenda is, whatever their project may be. That, within itself, is violation. And I know that, you know, I hate to point fingers, I'm not going to point fingers, okay? But I want you all to look yourself in the eyes. And every time you vote on projects, recall the campaign contributions that you received, okay? I know that if I go through some of your files, and ruffle through, like, some of the files that I have at, I don't know, this city, but other cities as well, I've seen the connections, okay? If not direct, through, like, Brandy Wines, okay? I've seen Brandy Wines' monies flowing from Newport Beach to, you know, Garden Grove, especially Garden Grove, okay? Especially Garden Grove, okay? And more importantly, Stanton and other cities as well. You know, you sort of see these certain names popping up city after city after city, okay? And I know that Eli Broad is behind a lot of it, okay? I've been following the money for years, okay? So, you know, the USA maybe don't do the job. The Attorney General never does the job, and the district attorney only does criminal activities that are pertinent to, you know, criminal activities that are pertinent to local police jurisdictions on whatever actions. Nobody, nobody really does anything with the government officials. You know, very rarely does a government official get pointed out and/or brought into justice, okay? But they should, okay? There's so many different topics here, I don't even need to waste my time with all of it. But more importantly, I want to raise issue that you guys have got a property that you're going to be paying, you know, $1.4 million for, okay? A bar that I don't think has generated any money, like, in numerous years. It was right next to the old Fire Station Motel, if you recall, back when, in 2002, when we removed that on Indian Domain. You guys have paid a lot of money for this property. You're making this guy a millionaire, and you guys are throwing a lot of money at, you know, these different people that are staying in that park. You know, you're making them rich on the taxpayers' expense. And these are taxpayers' money, you know? So, you know, and you guys are just throwing money right and left, like you know tomorrow. Well, theirs is tomorrow. And there ain't going to be much money left tomorrow if you guys just keep it up. So I just want to give you one little gift for the council, and this is something that, you know, since I got a feeling I'm not going to get to speak on much of these comments, because you guys have changed the rules, and I got a feeling that's a violation of campaign running, like, one, two, and three, and red acts. But I did bring you something. Long live the king. Always. And I'm going to return every chance I have to, to keep you guys in line. So, you know, I may not get to address each and every item in this, and probably not going to waste my time finally ending with the USA memorandums-wise, because, I mean, they don't do the job. I mean, look what they did in Mike Corona. I mean, I enlightened them with memorandum after memorandum with all this money launderings and campaign contributions, and they did nothing. I mean, he's walking here and there, you know? He's walking free today, and he's, you can always walk free, you know? So just to say, just remember, I'm not alone watching, but so is God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. And as I speak, if you may allow, my staff to pass out, we have some information for each of the council member, as well as the city manager. So if I can have, I'm very honored to be here to, tonight, my name is Fong Lee with UVSA located here in the city of Garden Grove, to have, to be here along with the support from our community, especially the new Vietnamese Community Council that's just been elected recently with 18,000 votes from Vietnamese-Americans throughout Southern California, especially with Mr. Neil Nguyen as the president, and Mr. Khan as vice president, and Mr. Bruce Tran as a member of the newly-elected board. I'm here to, as you know, over the past month or so, we have come to this council more than once to address the concerns that we raised, that were raised by Councilman Antrud Do. Through our responses, both oral and written, I hope that they have addressed all of those concerns for this council. I also have prepared additional information in the form of pictures that should be able to address the concerns that were raised previously. It was unfortunate that we had to brought this, all this issue publicly, because they were raised in a public forum in this city council and also in multiple media outlets. Many of our supporters have contacted us regarding what they believe were concerns raised by this council, Garden Grove City Council, with our test festival, and as a result, we had to clarify those concerns with our constituents. It is my hope that we can lay this issue to rest after tonight's meeting. At the last meeting, our previous dead chair, Vu Dinh, and Councilman Antrud Do had agreed to meet up, but I know that since then, both men were busy and out of town and were not available. However, I just want here to emphasize that we're still looking forward to meet with Councilman Antrud Do, along with any council members that would like to meet with us, so that we can have a better and mutual understanding of each other to avoid future miscommunication. We recognize that in any event, there are bound to be different opinions, and that we welcome any constructive criticisms and thoughts from anyone in the public, so that all we ask is that to have those, to have a direct conversation with us regarding those concerns, rather than bringing it to public spaces to avoid miscommunication. So with that said, that's all I'd like to express to the council at this point. And nevertheless, I'd like to, once again, thank the city council and the staff for your support of our work for many years, and we hope that we don't have to bring this issue back again to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Protem Mayor and council member, as well as the staff. And I was surprised, I didn't know I was going to come here and say the things I'm going to say. I've been moving out of Garden Grove. First of all, I live at 13062 Jefferson Street in Garden Grove, California, and I'll be moving out of Garden Grove and into Westminster on May 1st. Therefore, I would like to ask to resign as a planning commissioner for Garden Grove from Bill, Mayor Bill Dalton, Protem Steve Jones, council member Andrew, Dina, and Bruce. I don't know what the normal procedure is, but I'm sure I'll meet with Kathy tomorrow to do that. But now that I'm here, I'd just like to say it out loud. No response?
Well, thank you for your service, and I think the protocol is to submit in writing, but, yeah.
Yes, correct. While I'm here, but also, I'm here to support the UVSA and their work and their contribution to the community so far. And as you stated, there's been a new chapter in the Vietnamese-American and United States for the past 35 years. We now have a council of seven members, three of which are here today, and we'd like to support UVSA and their contribution to Garden Grove, as well as to our community for the past years. And I'd like to ask that the council would support them just the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, with Antrud Do, Protem Stephen Jones, and city council members, gentlemen and ladies. Well, maybe I know that in the agenda, we have a special introduction for Antrud Do, but I'm here as the newly-elected president of the Vietnamese-American community in Southern California after the election of, on April 18, 2010, where 18,000 American people have come out to vote from San Fernando to South, to San Diego. I wish Antrud Do a happy birthday today. Well, I believe that we, as the newly-elected board director, we have to face, you know, many problems within our community. However, I think that 18,000 people chose it on us, and myself, 75.7% voted for me with 13,050 votes. And I believe that we really, not only just concerned about what happened in Little Saigon, Westminster, but throughout San Fernando, to Garden Grove, to San Diego. So we would like to introduce you, like, Mr. Ken Keng Nguyen, which all of you would know. He's the, will be the number three position in our seven board member, and then Bruce Tran is one of our board members. We would like to be, to offer liaisons between the city, between the Vietnamese-American community and the city of Garden Grove. Should you have any problem with, or any concern with any group, you know, even from the Union Vietnamese Student Association, we more than happy to act as a liaison, and then we will work in from both sides, that we can always resolve any problem peacefully, legally, or maybe without, you know, any harsh force between, you know, from one side to another. And I think that when we come into this age of information, it's just that the, we don't want, we have, like, all the communication to be between, you know, each group, especially the transparency is very important in the, in this kind of period and age, that once, I think that for the past nine years, the Union Vietnamese Student Association done a good job for transparency, they have their record, and we can always visit, you know, or request for, to provide any copies. And I believe that next year, we mark the 10 years that they have signed the contract with the city of Garden Grove, and I'm, we're looking forward to have, you know, maybe a bigger event when we have, like, a united Vietnamese-American community in Little Saigon, which is in the neighborhood of Garden Grove. And again, I appreciate for Mayor Protem Steve Jones and And again, I appreciate for, uh, Mayor Pro Temp Steve Jones and, uh, council ladies, Deana Nguyen have come to the, um, inaugurations, uh, event that we have at the Lutheran Church on, uh, last Sunday. I appreciate for your, um, kind, uh, and your kindness, and then your time to be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. There was a wonderful event that happened last week, here at the community center. This was an appreciation dinner for the volunteers of Garden Grove. I know Garden Grove has gotten a lot of nicknames over the years, some of them not so pleasant. But I'd like to think that we can come up with a better nickname for Garden Grove by calling it the Volunteer City. We have a tremendous number of volunteers in this city that do everything from graffiti removal to cert programs, and I think we are very privileged to be able to count on all of these people to help out whenever we need things done. And they do it out of the goodness of their hearts, without any compensation. And I'd like to think that there should be more opportunities for people to volunteer. Now, one opportunity that comes to mind is one that unfortunately, I was not able to continue participating in. That was code enforcement. I really enjoyed working for the city as a volunteer code enforcement, uh, person, driving around, uh, through the city, checking on reports of cars parked in the middle of lawns, uh, vegetation overgrown, really bad examples of housekeeping in the City of Garden Grove. My partner and I spent several hours on weekends doing this for the city, and we enjoyed doing it. Unfortunately, certain rules and regulations have come along that have said, "Well, you can no longer do that unless you go through a whole series of regulations and background checks and everything before we can allow you to continue to do that." Personally, uh, I didn't think it was, uh, worthwhile to me as far as a background check. I held a secret clearance in the military, uh, been on the grand jury. I don't think there's anything in my background that would be subject to, uh, anyone being concerned about. But I think there ought to be a way that perhaps the, uh, legal department of the city could be able to come up with some way in connection with the police department to allow myself and some of these other volunteers to continue to do the work that we were doing without having to be members of a special organization within the city. All we wanted to do was to help by doing code enforcement. So I hope that it's possible for something to be done, make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Nguyen.
Honorable Mayor Bill Dalton, Mayor Pro Temp Steve Jones, and honorable city council members, yeah, on behalf of the Donate Life Organ and Tissue Transplant Donor Network, I would like to express our, um, special thank you for your support and, uh, help raise awareness about the, uh, need of organ and tissue, uh, donation to save lives. As you might already know, uh, in the United States alone, uh, one, more than 100,000 people are waiting for a vital organ to, uh, save their lives, and sadly, 18 persons each day, uh, died, um, because they cannot wait for a transplant. Uh, so, um, every one of us, each of us, we have the power to, um, save lives by saying yes at the DMV, by checking yes and have the pink dot. Um, and, uh, also, I, um, would like to invite you to participate to our run work with us, uh, this coming Saturday morning at 8:00 AM at Cal State Fullerton. And, uh, thank you for, uh, proclaim, for your proclamation for, um, April as the Donate Life Month.
Okay, don't, don't go anywhere. I'm gonna pull, uh, item 6B from the consent calendar, um, and that's proclaiming April 2010, DMV Donate Life California Month. And I have a proclamation here that I'm going to present to you, um, but we'll vote on it first, so... Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now it's official. But there are a couple of things here, too, that, that you should be aware of. It says, "Whereas a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, uh, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and enhance the life of up to 50 others." So I think that, uh, many people probably don't know, you know, how, how much you can accomplish, um, and when the time comes that, um, you know, you lose someone, it's, it's a very, uh, very trying time, but there are also as much good that can come out of it, and, and many other lives can be saved and touched, um, by the person who, who loses their life. So, but it's something to keep in mind. But I, I do want to present you with this official proclamation now that we've voted, so please come up. One more. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the agency.
You have one more?
Hmm...
Rod Powell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Rod Powell. It wasn't intentional, Rod. Okay, thank you.
You owe me one, Rod.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
My name is Rod Powell. I'm a citizen of Garden Grove. Um, I was on the computer tonight, and I was looking at all the beautiful homes that are, that were able to vote for. I haven't made up my mind which one I'm gonna vote for, but I like palm trees, so I think I'm gonna vote. There's a particular one that's got some nice palm trees. I can't remember which one it was. Anyways, I, I was lucky enough to get one of those, not one on the, on the internet, but one of the 20 homes or whatever they picked from an area one time. So it's kind of a nice thing that they appreciate people that take care of their house and have pride in their, in their home, in our beautiful city. I came down here, I don't know really what I was gonna say, but I want to remind the council that, uh, I hope one day we're gonna have the citizens of Garden Grove be able to vote, uh, for or against whether we have fireworks continue to be legal in this city. It's, you know, we're in one of five cities that still allow fireworks in the, in this county, and in practically all of Southern California, and as there's no fireworks in San Diego County. And so, really, it's five cities out of quite a large area that still have fireworks. We're the last ones, and it's just a matter of time before something will happen, like it's happened in LA County, where cities have a disaster, unfortunately, and we will be voting eventually on it, no matter what. I just wish we could do it sooner. It's not that hard. At least, why can't you guys just decide between five people whether we will or not? Last year, we didn't even get to have that because of the way that it was played out by, by former councilman Rosen, where he put it off to the future, and then it never did get voted. It's like you guys won't commit, you know? Some will, and, you know, and it, to allowing us to vote on it, and others won't. Um, I'm not gonna, um, well, I, I'm here, Councilman Doe is here, and I'm gonna say how I feel. I don't think, feel that it's right to be on this city council and splitting time between San Ana and Garden Grove at the very best. I don't think that's what's happening. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not stupid, just so you know. I've got a high aptitude in logic. You know, I haven't really investigated as much as I could, but I know that there's vehicles that get parked in Garden Grove, and the family is somewhere else a lot of the time, if not all of the time. And I don't know who drives that silver truck. You know, that's a very small house. I know how many square feet, how many bedrooms, unless it's been added on, which I don't think so. I don't know what's going on, and I'm not happy about the fact that, that this, this goes on, you know? You know how I feel about, local politics should not be a dirty thing like national politics. You know, everybody, the, the national politics now, you're either on one side or you're on the other side. It's just so, you know, I mean, I, I don't, it, it's not like I can respect anyone, you know? I have my, my feelings on all political issues, but when everyone on one side of the Democrats votes one way, and everyone on the Republicans votes the other way, you know, that, to me, that's not how, how we should run a country. You know, everyone should have their own say. It should be, let some Democrats feel one way, and some Republicans feel another way, and yet, they don't go with the way they feel, they go with their party. You know, but local politics should, is not, it's like no parties. It should be no parties, you know? And, and because our issues are, are, you know, not the same as on, what is on the national scale. And I don't know what I'm trying to say with that, but, you know, I'd like to think that at the local level, we're more honest, is what I'm trying to say. And honest means when you're on the Garden Grove City Council, you live in the city of Garden Grove, you don't come from another city for political reasons of someone that's not even on our council, that used to be on our council, and Janet Nguyen, wanting someone on this council to control our council and our city. That's how I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll close oral communications. Mr. Brown, go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the agency for community development, uh...
Can, can I respond?
Okay, hold, hold up. Yeah, let's, no...
We all get to respond if he gets to respond. Excuse me, I don't mean anything against you, Mr. Doe, but we don't get to respond.
No, you, you do, you do, and we had just brought that up. So let's go ahead, and let's, let's hold you for a minute. Go ahead, and if you want to respond to anything, go ahead and do it.
Mr. Powell, uh, I don't know if you're still here.
Still.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you think that by waiting a few months and come back, that somehow the issues that I have raised before, um, to, in order for people to accurately judge your credibility, is simply forgotten. If you're talking about dirty politics, I want to remind people that you were the one that went out there and said in public places that I cheated with a 16-year-old high school student, remember? And you apologized for that, remember? And you, you, you were the one that also said that my eight-year-old daughter was in on the fraud, eight-year-old girl in on a fraud, okay? I have said before, you, sitting here as an elected, you can, you're entitled to your opinion as a constituent, you can say what you want, but you have no right to distort me as a person. And when you try to cast a patina of truth by citing facts that somehow you drove by my house, and you never see me, and never see my family, then I have to address, because I will not allow you to distort me as a person. I have said it before, and I'm gonna repeat it now. I have lived there almost two years. You confronted my neighbors. When they told you I lived there, you, you said to them, "No," that my neighbor was lying to you. One of these days, I'm gonna trouble my neighbor and have him come here to tell people what kind of person you are.
Now, wait a minute, hold on for a minute. Rod, you know, when you were up here for your five minutes, I didn't allow anyone to make comments, and this is not a dialogue. He, he lets you go, so please allow him, um, and if you have any other comments, come back next council meeting. Okay? Fair enough?
So when you went to the other place, another house that I own, and you confronted a person living in that neighborhood, and they told you I no longer live there, you harassed that person by saying that how that person lied also to cover for me, to the point where that person had to track me down and call me on my cellphone because there's some stalker who's stalking me. And if you want me to, I'll bring that neighbor in as well. So when you come in here and you're trying to pass off, you know, this fiction that somehow you're there for five minutes, and all of a sudden I show up, each and every time you were there, I want people to know what kind of person you are, so they can judge accurately what you say up there at the podium, okay? So I don't intend this to be a tit-for-tat up here. I don't want to waste people's time. But you have come back here now, again, after a few months hiatus, to try to repeat the same stuff, and I want to repeat, to, to remind people of all the stuff that had transpired before, so that they can see again all the things that you said, and how they have been addressed before, and unless you stop, I'm gonna keep reminding people of the same things that you have been doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, did you want to respond?
Yes, I'm a little tired of this. I mean, basically, we need to have this change so that we have a right to speak when somebody gets up here and calls you a jerk or something. And it seems like Mr. Doe has that opportunity, you have that opportunity, but I don't have that opportunity.
That's not true. You didn't, that's not true.
I'm feeling very discriminated against. And I'd like to move, I'd like to move matters from the council right up under oral communications, so I get to speak back when somebody comes up here and calls me a jerk.
Just, just to clarify one thing, I allowed him to speak. You didn't ask to speak. Had you, had you asked to speak after oral communications was closed, I would allow you to. I told you that.
I didn't recall hearing that.
Well...
I appreciate your generosity.
We're going on it tonight.
Okay, so every, are you done?
Yes.
All right, now you have agency. Go ahead.
At this time, we'll open up the agency for community development. Ms. Baylor, would you please call Rose?
They're all, they're, they're already open.
Oh, you're right. We will continue on with the redevelopment agency. Uh, we've had public input, we've called, uh, no close session, oral communications done, we'll go to public hearings, 5A.
And that includes 7A from the council.
That is correct. It's a joint.
Yes, we'll give a joint public hearing, and Katie Angel is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Agency Board members. Before your consideration are city, city and agency resolutions approving a cooperation agreement between the city and the agency for the use of tax increment to fund a portion of the costs associated with the installation and construction of the Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center, located at 12661 Sun Swept Avenue. The new center, once completed, will be a two-level, 6,600-square-foot facility with an outdoor multi-sports court. The first-floor multipurpose room will house homework clubs and day camps. A teen center upstairs will serve as headquarters for the Teen Leadership Group program, and an area will be dedicated to counseling and case management. The center will be primarily financed using 2.5 million in funds previously awarded as a Murray Hayden Urban Parks and Youth Service Grant. However, this grant program was temporarily frozen by the state due to the state's ongoing budget crisis, causing delays in the construction schedule. Due to the construction delays, there are now overages in the construction budget. The grant is also insufficient to fund certain construction costs and installation of additional improvements required as part of the project, including the installation of fiber optic cables, permanent affixed interior structures, such as cubicles, counters, cabinets, and a server. Financing sources and mechanisms, mechanisms in the city other than the agency's tax increment are committed to the development of other required public improvements and projects within the city. Agency staff has prepared a cooperation agreement between the city and the agency for the agency to fund 460,000 of tax increment revenues from the Buena Clinton project area towards the center. Completion of the new center is consistent with the objectives of the Buena Clinton redevelopment plan and the agency's five-year implementation plan. This, the Buena, the center will benefit Buena Clinton, uh, the Buena Clinton project area by enhancing the natural and spatial values of the project area, providing youth and families with recreational space, improving the safety and aesthetics of the property where the ser, center is currently being constructed, and enabling community services, social and support services that will benefit the project area, the neighborhood, and the residents in the surrounding community. Staff recommends that the city council and agency conduct the joint public hearing, that the city council adopt the attached city council resolution approving the cooperation agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the city. Staff recommends that the agency adopt the attached agency resolution approving the cooperation agreement, and authorizing the agency director to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the agency. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff is now available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing done. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. We have one speaker. We have one speaker, Mr. King.
Wave.
He waved it.
You waved it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You need a break.
I appreciate it.
I'll sit, but what else?
Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Hearing done. At this time, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what are your wish?
Move to per.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Is this for both of them?
It has to take separate actions. We've got a city council act and an agency.
Okay, this was the agency. Call for the vote.
Okay. You're calling for the vote for the agency.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay. Now, um, any questions for staff? If none, we'll call for the vote for the council.
Move the issue.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, it's items or considerations. My understanding, we're not going to, we're going to pull this?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there are matters from the agency members and director. Any rebuttal here? Hearing done. At this time, we will adjourn to May 11th at 5:30 PM in the council chamber of community meeting center.
Okay, we'll go to the public finance authority, and Rolle has already been taken for all these.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this will be a joint hearing with the city council. The first action will be the approval of the minutes by the financing authority.
So moved, second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
4A.
4A will be a joint hearing with the city council to consider the issuance of water revenue bonds, and Kingsley Okuriki is here to give a staff report on this item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fratell. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, with this item, staff is requesting that the city council and the City of Garden Grove Public Financing Authority Board, acting jointly, approve and authorize the execution and delivery of all the necessary legal and financing documents, agreements, and all related staff actions to complete the sale and delivery of the 2010 water revenue bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition, expansion, construction, and improvement of various facilities and requirements of the City of Garden Grove water system. By way of history, uh, in July 2007, the city council adopted a 10-year water financial plan prepared by our consultant, Black and Veatch. The plan included five years of incremental annual water rate adjustments and the issuance of a total of $32 million debt obligations that will be used to fund the identified capital programs. Last year, the city completed a water master plan that includes a detailed list of all the capital projects in the capital program with estimated cost and timelines for execution of all those projects. The plan also addresses critical capital needs necessary to promote the water system's continuous improvement. It provides fire flow capability and ensure consistent compliance with drinking water standards in the city. A list of the projects planned for execution over the next five years with the proceeds from the bond issue, is, from this bond issue is outlined in Schedule A, provided to you tonight as part of a yellow that is provided to you this evening. And, um, we have the Water Services Manager, Dave Esminger, here tonight, and he can provide more details about the projects outlined on that spreadsheet and answer any questions you may have in that regard after this presentation. Now, consistent with the water master plan, the bonding plan, it was to issue the council approved debt in three installments. The first installment presented for your approval tonight is estimated not to exceed $20 million. The remaining balance will be issued in a later year when the proceeds of the first issuance are used up for the projects. Now, again, on December 8, 2009, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of this first installment of the water revenue bonds, and to engage the services of the required financing team that includes a financial advisor, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, and the underwriter required to prepare and market and actually sell the revenue bonds. The financing team and the legal team, they are here tonight. Besides me is Yega, our bond counsel, and in the audience is Bill Reynolds, our financial advisor, and Eric Scraven, the underwriter with EJ de la Rosa that is marketing the bonds. They are all here and available to answer any questions you may have about the bonds at the end of the presentation. These 2010 water revenue bonds that we are asking for your approval tonight will be issued in the aggregate amount, again, as I said before, in an amount not to exceed $20 million. And it could be issued in three different series. A series A, which will be tax exempt, and a series B, which will be a Build America bond that will provide the city with a 35% interest cost subsidy from the federal government. And series C, which is, again, a federal program, the Recovery Zone Economic Bond, that will also provide, in this case, 45% bond interest cost subsidy from the federal government. Now, it is anticipated that the issuance of a portion of the bonds as Build America bonds or Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds will reduce the city's net effective borrowing cost. Now, the bottom line is this, these special bonds will be used in the mix of the bonds to be issued within this $20 million if it makes economic sense as we go out to sell the bonds. Also, we have secured a good rating on the 2,000 bonds from the Standard and Poor's Rating Agency. On April 14, they reaffirmed the city's water system underlying credit rating of double A, and in, and this time with a very stable outlook. This is a very good and solid double A rating that will enhance the authority's ability to secure a very good interest rate on the water revenue bonds. In your package, Attachment 7 outlines the S and P rating report. The stage, with all of this, the stage is now set to actually sell the water bonds. The anticipated closing and sale date of the bonds is scheduled for May 13, 2010. But that date could change depending on the conditions in the market. It could change by a day or so, but that's exactly the date we are looking at to sell the bonds. Now, in terms of, just to summarize the financial impact, the principal amount, again, is in the aggregate amount not to exceed $20 million. However, as we go to market the bond, we are estimating that it will actually be closer to about $17.5 million when we go out to sell the bonds. Out of that, we are expecting the net proceeds that will be applied towards the project to be about $16.5 million. About $750,000 will be placed in, and deposited in bond reserve fund as required, and the total issuance cost, including underwriters discount, is estimated at approximately $250,000. The true interest cost of this bond issue is estimated in the neighborhood of 4%, which is a very good rate. The overall annual debt service payment that we have to pay every year to service the bond, it's approximately $1.3 million over the life of the bond. And the water revenues coming in so far, enhanced by all the approved rate adjustment, would be sufficient to pay the bonds, support the water operations, cover wholesale water costs, and begin the capital improvement work. With that, staff is recommending that the city council and the Board of Directors of the Garden Grove Financing Authority, acting jointly, adopt the respective resolutions presented before you tonight, and by doing so, approve and authorize the execution and delivery of all necessary legal and financing documents, agreements, and all related staff actions to complete the sale and delivery of the 2010 water revenue bonds. This concludes my presentation, and I, along with the financing and legal team members, can answer any questions that you have.
Any question for council members?
Yeah, I have a question. It's my understanding, and I haven't heard anything from staff, but that there is a South County Water Agency drooling over Well 28. Has this got anything to do with that?
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, uh, the, the Well 28, South County relation has nothing to do with the city acquiring bonds for their capital improvements.
Thank you.
Ms. Wynn.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. You said the estimate for the bond would be about $17 million, but on the Schedule A, there are two columns. One is the first bond installment and one is the second bond installment. I wanted to know, why do we have two installments? And if I add those two together, it's a different amount than what you presented.
Well, um, the original amount, the two installment is $32 million. As I said earlier, we plan to issue it in two installments. The first installment is what we are addressing tonight, and we think it would be approximately, when all is said and done, $17.5 million. And we will use that money. If we go out to issue $32 million today, I don't think our public works group will be able to execute all of that work that, um, within the next three years. So we broke it out in an amount that they can handle.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the project on the Schedule A will cost about $30 million, but tonight, we're just talking about half of the costs.
Half of, approximately half, yes.
Okay. Uh, my next question is, how will be, we be paying back the bonds?
Okay, the bonds will be paid from water revenues, from rates.
That we raised before from 2007.
Yes.
Do you foresee us not having enough to pay for the bond?
No, based on our analysis today, I think we have sufficient revenue and sufficient coverage for the bonds.
So we don't have to raise the water rate again to cover these bonds?
In, when, when, uh, when we adopted the financial plan, we adopted a rate plan for five years.
I, I meant, um, other than what we have, the council has adopted already.
No, I'm not anticipating that, um, in the next five to 10 years, that, um, at least within the five years, a plan that we have, that there will be additional rate increases. What we have so far is sufficient to cover the debt service on the bonds.
And how long do you anticipate for us to pay off this bond?
The bond is, uh, the term of the bond is approximately 20 years.
So our tax increment that we raised for the five-years period, would that cover the 20 years?
Our analysis right now indicate that that would be sufficient to cover the bonds that are approved today. Whether the bonds are approved today is sufficient to do all the work that is necessary 10 years from now. We did not look beyond that. 10 years from now, we may have to do another water master plan to gauge where the underlying infrastructure of the system stands, and at that point, decisions have to be made whether existing revenue is sufficient or whether additional revenues are required to continue to improve, um, the system at that point.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify for, um, the public, and then I wanted to name the streets that will be affected by this, um, project, and that's, uh, Cattell and Dale, Fairview and Lewis, Gilbert and Trask, Washington, Ward and Warrow, Luera, West Chapman, um, Jerry, Evan, Evan Valencia, and, um, West Haven, Lamson, Magnolia, Trask, West Garden Grove Booster, Lamson and Trask. Just want to let everyone know, um, where this project covers. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Will B. King?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Sorry. Thank you. Thanks for being ready.
Well, no, the reason why I want to mention that because...
No, that's okay. I was just...
It could be a public hearing.
Well, it isn't, so...
It's a lot of, from running, 1, 2, and 3 in the red act.
Thank you. Sit down, but when I, when the next item comes up to your speak, I'll be happy to call on you. Thank you, Will. Okay, do these need two separate motions? Do we need one for public financing and one for council, or? We do?
I'll move 4A of public finance.
Second.
I have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, for item 9A.
I'll move 9A.
Second.
I have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, I think that's it for the public financing.
You can recess to finance.
We'll recess that, and we'll go to the sanitary district. Consent items.
You have two items there, Mr. President. It's recommended that a motion be made to approve both of them.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters from board members. Okay, hearing done. We'll adjourn the meeting till Tuesday, May 25th at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Then we'll reconvene the council and go to consent items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it's recommended that items now 6C through 6N be accounted simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Move the ballots.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
See, 7B, is that where we're next?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that's a public hearing to consider issuance and allocation of recovery zone facility bonds for the Embassy Suites Hotel, and Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mayor Dalton, members of the city council, before you tonight is a request that the city conduct a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, if you prefer, in connection with the proposed issuance of recovery zone facilities bonds in an amount not to exceed $20 million for the purpose of financing the Embassy Suites Hotel expansion project located at 11767 Harbor Boulevard, and to consider a resolution providing the approval under TEFRA of the issuance of the bonds to finance the project. On January 26, 2010, the city council approved a resolution designating the redevelopment project areas within the city as the Garden Grove Recovery Zone for the purpose of issuing public and private bonds under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. These bonds were created under the Federal Stimulus Program enacted by Congress in February of 2009 and are intended to stimulate the economy in the recovery zones through economic development and job creation activities. The facility bonds are issued by a governmental entity to obtain tax-exempt status, and proceeds are then loaned to a private borrower to fund the project. Except as expressly provided for in the bond proceedings, the governmental entity does not obligate itself to repay the bonds. The city has accepted an application from Landmark Hotels LLC requesting the issuance of recovery zone facility bonds and authorization of a loan agreement to finance the costs associated with the expansion of the Embassy Suites Hotel, either as the entire expansion or possibly in two phases. The project will generate an estimated 200 construction jobs and 100 permanent jobs in the city of Garden Grove. In order for all or a portion of the bonds to qualify as tax-exempt, the city council must conduct a public hearing pursuant to TEFRA that provides members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor or against the use of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of a proposed project. Prior to the TEFRA hearing, reasonable notice must be provided to members of the community, and that notice was provided as required by law. Prior to the issuance of the bonds, a $20 million allocation must be authorized by the state. California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, or SIDLAC, is currently reviewing an application for the purpose of providing this allocation for the project, and is part of the process as requested that the city conduct this TEFRA hearing tonight and adopt what is known as an inducement resolution providing for the issuance of the bond allocation for the project. If the city receives the allocation or any, or any portion thereof, the city or an affiliated entity may then issue the bond allocation and enter into a loan in a principal amount, again, not to exceed the $20 million, in this case lending the proceeds to Landmark Hotels LLC in an amount not to exceed $20 million. Financial impact of this action, there's no impact to the city's general fund. Debt services to be paid by the private borrower, Landmark Hotels LLC pursuant to a loan agreement which would be entered into between Landmark LLC and the city or another entity at a future date. So our recommendation this evening is you conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the city or an affiliated entity entering into a loan in a principal amount not to exceed $20 million and lending those proceeds of the loan to Landmark Hotels LLC and allocating an amount not to exceed $20 million of the city's recovery zone facility bond allocation for the benefit of the project to be financed. recovery zone facility bond allocation for the benefit of the project to be financed. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available, as is Mr. Yeager and others, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, hearing done, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Okay, Will.
It's not the issue at hand that I want to address. It's the issue of public comments, okay? It's the issue of bond-related elections.
Wait a second. This is a public hearing for the item only that we're talking about.
Yeah, the bond issue, in reference to twenty million, yeah, I don't even address that. I don't know the full details on it, so, you know, I'm not going to speculate. And the issue that I just want to address would be the public comments.
That's...
Run Act.
You can't do it this time, sorry.
Well, I'm ready. When you want to talk about Run Act, I'm like a firecracker.
Okay, come back in two weeks, I'll be happy to give you five minutes. Thank you. Okay, anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing then.
Move the issue.
Second.
Okay, have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Eight A.
Eight A is the proposed budget two thousand and ten and eleven for the Main Street Assessment District, and Cal will be here to give a staff report on this item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on March eleventh, two thousand and nine, the Main Street Commission approved the attached budget for the next fiscal year, twenty-ten to twenty-eleven, which is before you for approval. This is the first step in the process to levy an assessment on the properties on Main Street. As part of this process, the council must also adopt the attached resolution to authorize the engineer to prepare the required report as part of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed budget for the Main Street Assessment District, number one for fiscal year twenty-ten to eleven, and adopt the attached resolution describing the proposed improvements, directing the engineer to prepare the required report under the Landscaping and Lighting Act, and authorizing staff to initiate assessment proceedings. This concludes my report. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Nine B.
Mr. Mayor, nine B is to consider a engineering and traffic survey for the city, and Bill Murray will be here to give a staff report on this item.
Senator... Turn joke.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, up-to-date speed surveys are required to issue speeding citations per the California Vehicle Code. On June twenty-ninth of two thousand and nine, Caltrans issued a policy defining the establishment of speed limits in the state. At that time, it became prudent for the city to update its surveys and establish new speed limits. The survey is attached to your staff report for your review. The survey was also approved by the Traffic Commission on January fifth of this year. In general, twenty-eight road segments received a five mile per hour increase, while one segment was increased by ten miles per hour. Staff recommends the approval of the Traffic and Engineering Speed Survey and introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance adjusting the Twenty-Nine Street segments entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Amending Chapter Thirty-Six of Title Ten of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Establishing Speed Limits for Certain Designated City Streets Based Upon an Updated Traffic and Engineering Speed Survey." This concludes staff's report. Available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Cal, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, nine B.
That was nine B.
Yeah, that was nine B.
Oh, excuse me, nine C. I'm sorry. You got a different set of orders? You know what, it sure does look like it. No, I don't have any. You know what, I think, thank you, Bruce. You stuck this in here. Thank you.
And nine C was the...
Okay, go to the next item.
Ten, ten A, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to recuse myself from ten A and ten B.
And ten B, okay.
How about anything else?
Go ahead.
Okay, ten A is ordinance number two-seven-seven-three for second reading, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting a Negative Declaration and Approving Plan Unit Development Number PUD one-twenty-four-dash-ten," changing the zoning designation from R-one Single Family Residential to Plan Unit Development Number PUD one-twenty-four-dash-ten.
Move the issue.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Ten B.
Ten B is ordinance number twenty-seven-seventy-four for second reading, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting a Negative Declaration and Adopting Development Agreement Number DA one-eighty-dash-ten Between Brandywine Homes, Developer, and the City of Garden Grove."
Move the issue.
Second, call for the vote.
I don't think so.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, with councilmember Win voting no.
I didn't vote no. That was a yes.
Okay, let's try it again.
Did I announce the wrong no?
No, it's all red light.
Oh, there wasn't a no.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay. Ten C.
Ten C is ordinance number twenty-seven-seventy-five for second reading, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Code Amendment Number A one-fifty-four-dash-ten to Add Chapter Nine Point Four-Eight to Title Nine of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Pertaining to Undergrounding of Utilities and Amending Title Nine, Chapter Nine Point Four-Zero, Section One Sixty Pertaining to Required Subdivision Improvements."
Move the item.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters from the mayor and council, Ms. Broadwater.
Are we changing?
Yeah, I think we had it on our consent item, didn't we?
Yeah, it was nine...
It's under consent item.
It already went.
We did it.
Congratulations.
You know, it's not nice to fool the old man.
Six G.
Want me to read it for you?
Happy birthday, Kelsman Doe.
Thank you.
Ms. Nguyen.
I was telling your staff, you're still a young chicken. You haven't hit the five-zero yet. Happy birthday. I'd like staff to check the traffic over at Dawson and Westminster. I had a lot of complaints about that location. There has been a lot of traffic accidents there, so I don't know if we need some kind of yellow flashing lights or a sign, if staff could look into that. There's been a lot of comments about people investing in Garden Grove. They invest land, they invest in building, and they invest in retails, and we welcome that. Anything into Garden Grove is good for the citizens of Garden Grove. Just want to remind everyone to buy and do business in Garden Grove. And in commemorating a very sad day for Vietnamese-American community, that is April thirtieth, this coming Friday, I want to just give a prayer to all of those that has given their life in the Vietnam War and fought for freedom and the freedom of others. There will be celebrations throughout Orange County from the Vietnamese-American community, and everyone's welcome to them. I know that the War Memorial in Westminster will have several ceremony that day, and it's throughout the day. And on Bosa Street, right across from the Asian Garden Mall, they have a black wall erected, and you can view those pictures of the victims since nineteen seventy-five and before that, and also victims who are still suffering to this day because they have fought for human rights and democracy. That is all I have to say, and in my ending remarks, again, I like to give prayers for those that have fought and died in the war, and to thank those that has fought and have sacrificed for freedom and democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Just want to wish councilmember Doe a happy birthday. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Doe.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to explain my absence at the last council meeting. I was part of a county delegation to South Korea, and it was a very hectic trip with, as you know, as part of any delegation, you have the event scheduled all day, pretty much from eight, nine o'clock in the morning to sometimes eight, I mean, ten o'clock at night. We learned a lot, and one of the reasons we went was to foster a bond between the County of Orange and some of their bigger businesses in South Korea. We toured Samsung, we toured the Hyundai Auto Plant, and, you know, in this economic climate, we try to do all we can to bring business here to the county. And we have a neighboring county to the north, Los Angeles, that has a slightly bigger population of Korean-Americans, and so we want to make Orange County be better known, and I think we have an advantage in that regard. And we're hoping to have companies like Samsung and Daewoo and Hyundai, you know, the Kia, to establish their headquarters here in the County of Orange. And that's how we work towards, hopefully, a better economic future for us. And these trips are planned months in advance, and so if they happen to fall on council meeting that happen to have any items that, and they all deserve our attention, but if I miss out on some of the votes, I apologize for that, but I believe it's for a good worthwhile cause for us. Just like my trip to DC before, a press release that just went out from the county Public Works Department, that's something that we should keep in mind, they estimate that even now it'll cost about two and a half billion dollars to bring our county's flood control system up to what would be standard. And of course, as you know, Westminster and Garden Grove are heavily impacted by the flood control system that we have. So therefore, part of what we do is, we have to anticipate the needs and then go and pitch that to our federal legislators. And the city doesn't have federal lobbyists, and so when the opportunity arose, I took advantage of it, and hopefully, we can get some of that done. And if we can get some of the projects that I'm currently working on, if we can get it accomplished, that would be a great day for our city. I'm going to follow up on the April thirtieth event coming up, as mentioned by councilmember Dino Nguyen. I wasn't going to be too reflective, but since it was raised, and I can't help but feel like I need to share a little bit of that emotion in me. It was pretty much right around today's date, probably thirty-five years ago, that I left Vietnam as a boy. And the way we left was very abrupt, no preparation, didn't really get a chance to bring too much with us. So we left literally with basically the clothes, you know, on our back. And when I and many other Vietnamese-Americans come here, and many people have remarked on the success that we have achieved as a community, I always want to remind people to take a step back, that as hard as we work as individuals, many people work hard, but what we have here in this country is the system that provides the opportunity for people to be the best they can be. And in this society, we don't subscribe to the zero-sum gain mentality that may exist in other societies, which is if whatever I have, I have to take it out of your pocket. We believe in working together, and together we can rise together as a people and as a nation. And that is the opportunity that we should never, never take for granted. And I think as our men and women are fighting around the world to fight for some of the freedom and our way of life for some other of the people around the world, I think we should always keep that spirit in mind. And as we look back on April thirtieth, both as Americans and also as Vietnamese-Americans, I think we, like councilmember Nguyen said, should always remember to pay tribute and recognition to the sacrifices that have been made and are continuing to be made by people who actually paid the ultimate sacrifice in giving up their life and also their life back here in the states to go fight for our freedom and our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to send condolences to our Vietnamese community, knowing, you know, the tragic events that led up to April thirtieth, nineteen seventy-five, and our prayers are with the survivors and the descendants and all those American soldiers and Vietnamese civilians and soldiers that gave their lives. I'd also like to adjourn the council meeting in honor of Sylvia H. Morabito Moots, an eighty-seven-year-old woman, passed away two days ago, Sunday. I've known her many, many, many years. She moved to Garden Grove in nineteen fifty-seven. She survived by her son Samuel and her daughter-in-law Norma, and three grandchildren, Samuel Morabito III, Gabriela Morabito, and Danielle Morabito. There is a viewing at Diamond and Shannon Mortuary tomorrow night, Wednesday night, and Thursday, there's a funeral mass at St. Columbas Church. If you knew Sylvia, she was just a wonderful woman. The highlight of her career was going to Hometown Buffet, and everybody up there knew her. I mean, she was just a wonderful person, and she's going to be sorely missed, and our prayers and condolences go to her family. Thank you. We'll adjourn this meeting till the next council meeting, May eleventh, five-thirty in the council chambers.